Good evening. This regular meeting of May 13, 2019, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Downe Hugh.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Sancy.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
All right, we have students from Jefferson Middle School who are going to come forward, introduce themselves, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So come on forward.
Hi, I'm Mariano, and I'm in 7th grade.
Hi, my name's Isaac, and I'm in 7th grade.
Hi, my name is Mike, I'm in 6th grade.
Hi, my name is Helena, and I'm in 6th grade.
Hi, my name is Marianda, and I'm in 6th grade.
I am Johanna, and I'm in 7th grade.
Hi, my name is Rossen, and I'm in 8th grade.
Hi, my name is Lee, and I'm in 8th grade.
Hey, my name is Dale, and I'm in 8th grade.
All right, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think they were at the best.
Yahweh.
Yahweh, yeah.
Yahweh.
Thank you.
Yahweh.
Thank you for doing such a nice job.
You take good care of Jack.
Have a great rest of school year.
Thanks for coming.
Great rest of school year.
Thanks for having me.
Nice work.
Great rest of school year.
Thanks for having me.
Wow, you guys are the best.
You did such a nice job.
Thank you.
Yahweh.
Good to meet you guys.
Yahweh.
Yahweh.
I got two out of six out of you. Nice to meet you.
Yahweh.
Creator, all right.
Thank you.
Yahweh.
There you go, 66.
Thanks for coming. Yeah, I say thanks.
That's a nice touch.
They were the best ones.
I want to hang out with those guys.
I know. That's pretty good.
You're right, Mr. Barton there, they were the best.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 8, 2019, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 8, 2019, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Next motion?
I move the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget amendment and authorized payment of legal notices publications cost to the Telegraph Herald.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and the budget amendment and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Kelleher.
Evening, Board members and Superintendent Ryan Gans. Tonight, we are, it's that time of year where we review all of our expenditures and compare them to the budget that was created last year, and we need to amend it as we had in the past. My first statement is, this does not impact the levy rate that the Board approved back then, was about 15, 16 months ago. It has no change to that. This has to do with the amount of expenditures that we have, and we have to budget in four functional areas, and those areas include instruction, other support services, non-instructional programs, and other, which is basically kind of construction costs. We are asking tonight for you to lower actually two of the areas and increase the support services area. Reason for that is we had some reclassifications in expenditures. They were budgeted in one area and then spent in another of the functional areas. So we're lowering two, increasing one. And then we're also, the one that we're increasing, the support services area, there was additional expenditures outside of what we budgeted that occurred this year. So as you know, you approved the early retirement program. That was not originally budgeted in the budget. Also, we added HVAC, Insurance Break-Fix Program, that was done after the budget was completed. And I think the third thing was, there were some buses that were purchased. They originally scheduled to come in in the prior year. They weren't fully completed and made for us to use until they came in in July, so we had to pay for them this year, even though they were scheduled for payment last year. So those are the three reasons that we had to increase that support services area. Any questions on that? And one other follow-up piece is, you know, if we don't do this, we are in violation of the code. We have to change those area, budgeted areas, to match with our expenditures. We can't go over in those areas, otherwise we'd get a write-up from the auditors. So that's the reason we do this.
So local property taxes are not affecting?
Correct. Does not change the levy rate at all.
And the overall budget is basically neutral, you're just shifting from one focus area to the other.
For a couple of those areas, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody wishing to have any public comments? Can come forward. Okay.
I move the Board of Education adopt the budget amendment for fiscal year 2018-2019 as published.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget amendment for fiscal 2018-2019 as published. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, School Board recognition, I guess up to you.
All right. So as we near the end of our school year, and as part of School Board Recognition Month, we present our annual certificates, but everybody in the audience knows what the School Board does, but the folks on TV maybe don't. So I just want to take a few minutes and then thank the School Board for the countless hours that they spend as elected officials for the betterment of our community and of our students, specifically for the thoughtful collaborative leadership. We have a great team of folks at the Board who don't agree on every issue, but find very positive ways to work through those disagreements in a way that's for the best of our schools. So whether that's budgetary issues, academic curricular issues, we have made great strides in the past decade really, and a lot of that is due to the leadership at the School Board level, who are thoughtful in their consideration, who spend the time to get to know what's best practice for a school, what's best practice financially, and we are very proud always to work for the School Board and all the great things that we've been able to accomplish. So just a certificate to say thank you, and publicly hope folks hear or see this message at home that, you know, a school district is only as strong as its School Board, and Dubuque a school district is strong because of a strong School Board. So thank you for your time, your effort, and the leadership you provide for us. So just a quick, Lisa?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anderson?
Captain America.
Somebody put these in order for me.
Thank you, Anderson.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you. Jamie?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Nancy? Thank you.
All right. All right, we have some board salutes out there. Ms. Bradley, you want to start?
Sure, if you're going to. I feel honored to share this board salute. From time to time, our school district is recognized in some special ways, and it's no small accomplishment, things that I'm about to report, so thank you for letting me do that. The Iowa State Education Association, whose local affiliate is the Dubuque Education Association, gives awards, statewide awards, once a year for outstanding supporters of public education. A year ago, our Superintendent, Mr. Ryan Gans, our Executive Director of Human Resources, Mr. Kramer, were co-nominated for the state, for the local TEAM Award, and TEAM stands for Together Educators and Administrators Make It Happen. And it's presented to school administrators who have worked to create a collaborative, collegial working environment within the district for our staff, for our negotiations function, for the kinds of work that we do within for kids every day. And a year ago, they were given that co-honor, both received TEAM Award as a TEAM, and this year, last week, we received word when State ICA President Mike Baranek came to Dubuque to present the STATE TEAM Award winners, Mr. Ryan Gans, Mr. Kramer. So we celebrate that they not only have been selected at the local level, but also at the state level. And I'll share a quote from ICA President Mike Baranek. "At a time when respect and appreciation are sometimes lacking, Mr. Ryan Gans and Mr. Kramer's efforts are an outstanding example of how strong leadership is both effective and rewarding. We applaud their success in making Dubuque schools an inspiring place to work and look forward to many years of student growth and opportunity." So we certainly congratulate both of you, and you elevate our district, both by things that have earned you that award and not by the state recognition, so.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you. The second thing that is also included in this, I'm honored to be able to share, is that former School Board member Otto Kruger, who was a member of this Board for several years, made so many fine contributions, also received a STATE Award. This one is called the STATE Friend of Education Award. He was first locally nominated and received the award at the local level a year ago, and it is presented by the Dubuque Education Association to one person during the year. And so Mr. Kruger was given that honor a year ago, which sends him then to the state competition, if you will, for that award. People who have received the award from all over the state then go into competition for the final STATE Award. Well, we also received the word just recently, within the last couple of days, that Mr. Kruger has not only, not only has served as, this year is the STATE Friend, the local Friend of Education Award, he has received the STATE, the Iowa Friend of Education Award. Oh my goodness, I mean, that is such a big deal for us to have one, we have two, three STATE Award winners, and it's, and it's just a lovely thing for our district, and it speaks to the kind of quality of things that are happening here. In fact, when I spoke with Mr. Baranek at the Educator Cruciation Dinner last Thursday evening, he said, "I'm all over the state." He said, "I'm in districts north, south, east, west." He said, "I don't know if you know what a special thing you have going here in Dubuque." And I said, "Well, you're recognizing some of the components of what makes this district great." So you thanked us, Mr. Ryan Gans, we need to thank you, and Mr. Kramer, and Mr. Kruger for their fine work. And I should mention that Mr. Kruger's award comes out of many things that he's made his contributions, one of which was, he started with a young man in kindergarten, and Prescott, 13, 14 years ago, as a mentor for him, and he stayed with that young man, Keith, all 13 years. Keith graduated from high school a year ago, he's now completing his first year as a freshman at Clark University on scholarship. So, so many exciting things happening, so thanks for the honor of sharing those with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prohaska?
Yeah, I have a couple kind of STEM salutes. First of all, there's, I would like to give a board salute to our Washington Middle School teacher, Chris Sint, who is a recipient of the 2017 Verneer National Science Teacher Association Technology Award. As part of a STEM-based project, Mr. Sint challenges students to plan, create, design, implement, and market a model roller coaster track. Students use tools called photogates to track the velocity of a marble through the track and validate their claims through roller coasters, which were safe for patrons using accurate data. Through the grant, Mr. Sint received funding for classroom science equipment and was able to attend the National Science Teachers Association Conference. So congratulations to Mr. Sint, and congratulations to his team there at Washington Middle School. I have another one that I want to kind of give a salute to, another STEM project, is our Dubuque Robotics Team. Recently, they participated in the state regional contest in Cedar Falls, and then they went on to advance on to the national competition at Ford Field in Detroit, and they were judged as the rookies of the year awards. They won the rookie of the year award. There were several students that were at the educators banquet the other night, and they were, several of them approached me and told us how gracious they were to us for allowing them and having the Dubuque Foundation help them out for public schools, Dubuque Foundation for Public Schools, excuse me, fun part of their project. So it goes to show that our STEM projects and our technology things are moving on in our schools, which is great.
Great, thank you.
I have a board salute. The Julian Film Festival that wrapped up, it took place the middle towards the end of April, and there was a film that was brought to Dubuque in kind of connection with the schools. So the board salute goes to John Donovan and Mountaintop Stoneworks and PSSI Packers Chemical for their work in connecting the district to an outstanding learning opportunity. A film presented in the recent Julian Film Festival in April called Circles addressed the topic of restorative justice practices in an Oakland, California school. John was a member of the Film Selection Committee, and seeing the film, he saw an opportunity to create a chance for local schools to learn from the film subject, Eric Butler. John, with financial support from Mountaintop Stoneworks and the PSSI Packers Chemical, arranged for Eric to stay in town for an extra day after the film festival, to meet with the staff from across the district throughout the day, to hear his story, and unique perspective on restorative justice. So we want to thank John and Mountaintop Stoneworks and PSSI, and Eric Butler for creating connections as we continue our work to ensure that each and every one of our students finds success.
Great, thank you.
I'd just like to add a little bit to my robotics thing. I neglected to mention that our speaker at our Foundation for Public School banquet, Tom Preston, also offered quite a bit of financial support to our robotics team. So, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And if I might, I would just add one other piece to the things I've already mentioned, and that I'm sure we'll be recognizing him later, but last week also announced was the Next Teacher of the Year, and that is Adam Miller, Washington.
Hempstead.
High School, social studies teacher, and we certainly congratulate Adam for that award, and thank him for the exquisite work that he does every day. And seeing his brother Joel back there, I'm a missin' not, also thanking the Dubuque Education Association. When we talk about collaboration and collegiality, it's people like President Candier, Vice President Joel Miller, and other members of the leadership and membership of the Dubuque Education Association who bring that, the rest of that equation.
Absolutely.
And their dad was a teacher, social studies teacher at Jefferson Middle School, Art Miller, for years and years.
Sally ran the credit. The kid didn't have a chance. There's no way he wasn't going to be a teacher.
It was in their blood. So congratulations to the Miller family.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Anybody wishing to address the Board at this time can come forward. Yeah, there's someone there.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any Board members wishing to have any items removed?
Just to comment that those are there because they've come through the committee process.
There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, facilities and support services. Mr. Barton?
Yes, also, having come through the committee process, through the support services committee process, each of these nine following items have been thoroughly vetted and examined, and the tires have been appropriately kicked, kicked, ran out of oxygen, kicked. And so I will rifle through these motions, and if any further dialogue needs to occur, it certainly will. So with that, I move that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the food and nutrition meal charges for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association, teachers, counselors, and nurses as presented. Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association, teachers, counselors, and nurses as presented. Is there any discussion? Do we want to have any presentation at all?
It's been through the subcommittee, but certainly if the Board would like to hear the few details, Mr. Kramer would be happy to come up and do that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local Number 199 Custodians as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local 199 Custodians as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local 199 Custodians as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local 199 Custodians as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the change order number one to Tricon General Construction, Inc., on the district pool replacement project in the increased amount of $164,607.59.
Second, but it was change order number three?
No.
It's one? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong line. So sorry.
It has been moved.
Always somebody in the crowd.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one.
Number one.
To Tricon General Construction, Inc.,
Three is my favorite number.
On the district pool replacement project in the increased amount of $164,607.59. Is there any discussion?
I believe this was to rectify the existing pool of some variety. The old pool, excuse me.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center addition renovation project in the decreased amount of $13,763.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center addition renovation project in the decreased amount of $13,763. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Forum Boardroom Technology Upgrades Project, and set the date, time, and location as July 8, 2019, at 4:30 p.m. at the Keystone Area Education Agency, 2310 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Forum Boardroom Technology Upgrades Project, and set the date, time, and location as July 8, 2019, at 4:30 p.m. at the Keystone Area Education Agency, 2310 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with IIWPC for professional services for emergency roofing repair work at senior high school in the amount of $9,600.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with IIWPC for the professional services for emergency roofing repair work at senior high school in the amount of $9,600. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association, teachers, counselors, and nurses as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association, teachers, counselors, and nurses as presented. Is there any discussion? Do we want to have any presentation at all?
It's been through the subcommittee, but certainly if the Board would like to hear the few details, Mr. Kramer would be happy to come up and do that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Carpenter's Local Number 678 Maintenance as presented.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Carpenter's Local Number 678 Maintenance as presented. Is there any discussion? Do we want to have any presentation at all?
It's been through the subcommittee, but certainly if the Board would like to hear the few details, Mr. Kramer would be happy to come up and do that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the change order number one to Tricon General Construction, Inc.,
Three is my favorite number.
On the district pool replacement project in the increased amount of $164,607.59. Is there any discussion?
I believe this was to rectify the existing pool of some variety. The old pool, excuse me.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center addition renovation project in the decreased amount of $13,763.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center addition renovation project in the decreased amount of $13,763. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center addition renovation project in the decreased amount of $13,763.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center addition renovation project in the decreased amount of $13,763. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center addition renovation project in the decreased amount of $13,763.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center addition renovation project in the decreased amount of $13,763. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center addition renovation project in the decreased amount of $13,763.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number three to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center addition renovation project in the decreased amount of $13,763. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Tricon General
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 1 to Tricon General Construction Incorporated on the District Pool Replacement Project in the increased amount of $164,607.59.
Second, but it was Change Order Number 3?
No.
It's one. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong line. I'm so sorry. It has been moved.
I hope somebody in the crowd.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 1.
Number 1.
To Tricon General Construction, Inc.
3 is my favorite number.
On the District Pool Replacement Project in the increased amount of $164,607.59. Is there any discussion?
I believe this was to rectify the existing pool of some variety. The old pool, excuse me.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 3 to Ports and Construction, Incorporated on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition Renovation Project in the decreased amount of $13,763.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 3 to Ports and Construction, Inc., on the Alta Vista Alternative Learning Center Edition Renovation Project in the decreased amount of $13,763. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Forum Boardroom Technology Upgrades Project, and set the date, time, and location as July 8th, 2019, at 4:30 PM at the Keystone Area Education Agency, 2310 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Forum Boardroom Technology Upgrades Project, and set the date, time, and location as July 8th, 2019, at 4:30 PM at the Keystone Area Education Agency, 2310 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Nancy Bradley will be cracking the champagne tonight, probably. Yes. You've been waiting for this for a long time.
It has been a long time. This technology and this room is held together with chewing gum and toothpicks.
It feels like my body right now. Sounds like Anderson.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with IIWPC for professional services for emergency roofing repair work at senior high school in the amount of $9,600.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with IIWPC for the professional services for emergency roofing repair work at senior high school in the amount of $9,600. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation of used pool lap lanes that are no longer of use to the district to Dash.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the donation of used pool lap lanes that are no longer of use to the district to Dash. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Thank you, Mr. Barton. Okay, that takes us to ed programs, and I will give a brief update on that. We had a, kind of an update on the district organizational chart, just so everyone is understanding that, for a district of our size, we are very, I don't know the best word, bare bones, skeleton crew at the administrative level, and we've had, and we've hired a new equity director, and Mr. Suleman was introduced at that meeting to the Board. And it is a plan in place. Right now, we have, we've always had a couple positions that have since morphed together into one person doing two jobs, and that was special education and student needs position. And that position is going to be back into two separate positions, but it's not going to be the, Mr. Ryan Gans and Mr. Kelleher did a very good job of figuring out where we can find money within the budget that we already have.
Yeah, it'll be budget, it'll be in budget-neutral impact. We were able to move a few things and reduce a few expenses for next year to build it for that position.
And it's something that, the plan that they came up with is positive with the schools. They want this, they want the extra support that they can get with having somebody who is directly in charge of handling the special education.
Special education.
Thank you, I was thinking, we already have special, but directly with special education as that's a high number of our students. And then we're also given an update on what is being put together, a draft of the 2019-2020 priority initiatives. We asked for this to be done ahead of time before the school year starts, so instead of it being done after the school year starts, because it's kind of behind the eight ball, I think. So a draft was presented with that, with more to come on that. And then just the regular renewal of policies and review in addition. So that's it for the ed programs report as well. Which can take us to new business.
I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students number 814908 and 807807 at this time.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students number 814908 and 807807 at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any other board member or administrative items?
I know one thing that I, this past week, I've been seeing a lot of different business community people who are getting involved in some capacity to work with our schools. And I don't know if we do it enough, but we want to thank those business communities throughout the community who've come in and tried to play a role in helping our kids reach their full potential. So I know the Chandler family were giving out different grants to a variety of our schools. I saw a truck company who provided a variety of tools to senior high school, I believe. So we're very thankful.
They gave one to Senior and to Hempstead.
Senior and Hempstead? That's really good.
Truck country.
Truck country.
So I know as part of our strategic plan to find different ways to work with our business community, to give out internship, apprenticeship, and just work with us, right, to build our students. So very thankful for all those partners who work with us every single day throughout the year. So thank you. And there was a nice article today in the local paper about Mr. Schmidt from Happy Joe's, getting, organizing the battle of the books for several of our elementary schools. So there's another example of some business.
Yeah, we're very thankful for that.
Something in business really helping out education.
Yep, very grateful for that.
And those weren't just toolboxes, those were huge. Tool sheds. Those are very expensive.
Very nice.
Not to one-up the generosity of the Chandler family either, as you mentioned, but those were some serious toolkits. Yeah. Great.
Two administrative issues. One, more of a public service reminder to our parents and folks out there that this Friday is a normal school start time. We do not have the one-hour late start for professional development because of our need to make up some time in case the weather changes to have some heat issues in the last several weeks of the school year. And then, of course, the reminder that our next meeting is actually next Monday for the priority initiatives. So we can go into, it's kind of a fun meeting, it's a wrap-up of one year and sort of the beginning of the next year.
Yep, we never stop.
Never stops.
Graduation is June 1st.
Yes.
10 o'clock for senior high school and 3 o'clock for Hempstead High School on Saturday. All right, any other items? Great, we are adjourned.